Déclaration prégulière auquel c'est une vision des politiques de gestion des actifs. Madame Wallyat, c'est tu Julien qui fait ça?
Oui, exactement. Fait que qu'est-ce que, qu'est-ce qui peut arriver si Julien peut faire la présentation de Andy qui va faire la session.
Ok, Monsieur Lennard, tout à vous.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's like to start off by thanking members of council for participating in the council interview sessions and in tonight's workshop meetings. So these are two very important steps ensuring that both the administration and council feel confident that our revised asset management plan meets the needs of our residents. And so, as mentioned, tonight's meeting is more of a meeting and more of a working session, a working group meeting type meeting. And to help us along with this meeting, we have Andy Whitaker and Kelly Mini from Jacobs. So Andy will facilitate tonight's discussion and he'll help us guide us through the discussions and help us keep focus on the task at hand. So I'd invite Andy to just open his camera. I'll be transferring over the meeting to Andy at this point and I'll be closing off my camera.
Yeah, thanks, Julian. Yeah, good evening, everybody. I'm Andy Whitaker. I'll kind of facilitate us through tonight's discussion. And thanks very much to everyone for allocating this time today. I'll turn my camera off and I'm going to put up some material. I'm going to share my screen, put some material up and walk through that as we, as we go through the session this evening. Okay. Alright.
Andy, how's the weather in Alberta? I think you're in Alberta, aren't you?
I am, yes. I'm in Calgary and we're having a nice spell at the moment. It's nice and warm and sunny. Monique, I can't share my screen. Can you give me permission to share my screen?
I sure can. Sorry about that. There you go.
Cool. Okay, so hopefully everybody can can see this. Right, so I'm going to spend some time kind of review the road strategy and get some direction from, from members of council to take forward as we go forward with the roads related planning. And so preparation for, for this evening. Member of council, so thanks for your time in talking to us earlier. We got quite a wide range of input from, from everyone that participated. And what we've tried to do is distill that input into five key themes to, to discuss this evening. From the input that we had from everybody and there was all sorts of things that came up. The roads program is clearly the number one area for, for focus. So we'll really look at the, the roads program this evening and obviously if there are, there are other things perhaps that can be dealt with at another time. We also recognize that there's a range of views across the members of council. And so the purpose of, of what we want to do this evening is, is to discuss these themes. And we're recognized that not everybody is going to be 100% behind everything. There's going to be a range of views. And so what we'd like to do is I'll put, I'll put some sliders up. Is really gauge the level of support. Where have we got support for, for certain themes and we can move forward from them? Where is there, you know, a lot of range of views and it's going to take a bit more work to, to move that area forward. So there's five themes. We discuss each theme and then with each theme, let's gauge the level of support. So I'm going to ask people, you know, okay, who supports what's kind of written down on the screen? Alright, and let's see how many people support it, okay? And I'll move the pointers around, okay? Who's neutral about it? And, and then who doesn't support it? Alright, so we'll just gauge that level of support, see where we've got common ground and where we can take things forward. Okay, so that's, that's the intent. Recognize that there's a range of people. And let's gauge that level of, of support, okay, as we go through. Alright. And then at the end, we'll kind of wrap up with some kind of next steps for the administration to take on in terms of coming back to council with a more sort of formal set of recommendations. Alright. Cool. So themes this evening that we want to, to walk through. First of all, talk about maintaining the baseline plan on a municipality-wide view based on the need that's out there and the data that we collect through our inspection programs. Just discuss that and then say, okay, do we support doing that or to what degree do we support doing that? A second theme is that from what we heard from talking to you guys, the plan is rigid and it needs to be more flexible. Some more input from councillors and a perspective on what is going on in the, the individual wards. Alright, so again, we'll discuss that and I kick it around and then see what the, the degree of support is. Third thing is around communication. Simplifying and providing more clarity of communication from the administration to council and also arming councillors with an adequate amount of information about the program so that you can communicate to, to residents. So talk about that. Theme four is around the gravel road strategy. What should we do related to gravel roads? And discuss that. And theme five is around additional funding. Do we want the administration to investigate additional funding in terms of can we put more funding into the roads program? Where would that come from? And what scenarios would we, would we like to investigate? Okay, so those are the five things that we'd like to get through this evening. There'll be a parking lot item. For, for other items that come up, my colleague Kelly will, will keep a more detailed set of notes and keep a parking lot. And we'll come back to it at the end and see if there's anything on there that people have a, a burning desire to explore further and do we want to come back tomorrow night or at another point in the future, etc. So we'll, we'll come back to that at the, at the end. Okay. I wanted to kick things off with just a, kind of just a refresher on the roads program, you know, let's just everybody on the same page, kind of recognize where, where we are at the moment. There's a quick graphic on the state of infrastructure at the moment. You've got a significant amount of hard services in terms of asphalt services, but also a significant amount of gravel roads as well throughout the municipality. There's a range of distribution across the roads at the moment. And you do have a significant amount of your roads that are in poor condition and some of them right on the verge of going into, into very poor, very poor condition as well. So there's a range of conditions across the road surface the road network with a significant proportion that are in pretty poor shape. And so when we deal with roads, we want to think about the the overall life cycle of, of the road to make sure that when we ultimately put a program together, that we're, we're going about this and taking account of what are cost-effective things to, to do.
Andy, we're having trouble hearing you.
Okay, is, is this better?
Yes, I don't know if you're moving as you're talking, but you kind of cut off once in a while.
Okay, sometimes that happens when microphones of other people pick up things and it goes to that microphone rather than, than, than me, but so review of, of roads lifecycle concepts and our, and our program criteria. It's really important with assets like roads that we recognize that there are things that we can do early in their life. Okay, so this graphic is showing interventions that we can make early in their life. Relatively low cost, the lower costs and things that we do later. And they act to extend the life of the asset and they push out that point in time where we might have to do something that's, that's really quite expensive, like a complete reconstruction or something like that. Okay? So having a roads program that recognizes these lower cost and cost-effective earlier interventions, making sure that they're in our program and that we try and get the most out of the lifecycle, that lowers the overall cost of owning these assets and kind of a useful concept to, to bear in mind. So looking at the, the current program in Clarence Rockland, currently allocating roughly $2.7 million per year to the roads program. But when we kind of, you know, look at it overall, in reality, perhaps, you know, on the, over the longer term, it's more like $6 million a year that would be needed to really deal with all of the issues that exist in, in, in the current network and particularly some of those poor-conditioned assets that exist at the moment. Okay? So we, we have a limited amount of funding. And if we, in, living in a world where we have a limited amount of funding, we, we have to make choices. We have to make decisions about, about what we're going to do. The way the program is set up at the moment, there are these program criteria, high-level criteria that I use to say, okay, we have to live within our means and if we do that, how do we create a program and make choices? So some of the key choices that, that are built into the program at the moment is to prioritize the resurfacing. Okay, so these are these earlier interventions before the roads get into too much of a deteriorated state. They're lower cost. And so if we do those, if we prioritize those resurfacing, that means that we do the maximum amount of pavement kilometers that we can and we keep the overall network, when we look at the network as a whole, we keep the condition of that as high as possible because we're getting at the, the maximum amount of kilometers that, that we can. The criteria in the program at the moment also prioritize those roads where there are higher traffic volumes, the more people use them and roads and segments associated with destinations where people are, are trying to, to get to. So generally, the program is set up on that basis at the moment. That given we have a limited amount of funding, this is where we are going to spend our money. The consequences of that are that those expensive reconstructions on low-traffic-volume segments are the things that are currently low priority in the program and get deferred until we've got enough money to be able to, to address them. Okay? So that's the kind of current situation and setup. We just wanted to kind of baseline that and kind of restate that to get everybody on to, on to the same page. Okay, so now are there any kind of key questions from, from anyone? We don't want to spend a long time discussing this particular bit. I do want to move on to these key themes, but any particular questions or comments before we move on?
Yes, Sam.
I have a quick question. It's mentioned that we need about 6 million per year in order to get back to where we need to be. Do we also have, I guess, it's not sure if you would have this or not, but how much of an investment we would need for our whole network to bring it back to a, an acceptable range, I guess?
I, I don't have
Because how did we get to that 6 million, I guess, per year is my, my, my real question? Because do you know what that amount actually is in total or not?
I don't have all the details behind me.
Okay.
Would know that better than me. That 6 million is a rough number, just to kind of indicate what, what the, the nature of the gap is. Alright?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Monsieur Lavigne. Mikro.
Okay, so let's, let's move on.
One more question, Andy.
Oh, sorry, sorry, apologies. Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, you know, when you're talking prioritize high-traffic areas and destinations there for, for reconstruction, that should be a low priority and deferred, but the problem is we've been deferring some roads for about 30 years, so how do you explain that, you know?
Absolutely. I mean, you know, it's a result of the funding that you have available to you and at the moment, your, 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 your program is being set up in this kind of way based on the planning that you've, that you've done before. And obviously, there's different approaches that you could take. But getting at some of those deferred reconstructions, increasing the amount of funding is one way of getting you know, creating available funding to be able to dive. And I want to discuss that, okay?
Yeah, okay.
I can't see everybody, all the councillors. I can only see four councillors. So if somebody wants a question, you better just speak up and I'll let you in. Okay, okay, Andy.
Okay, thanks. Right, so let's move to, to theme one. What we've done at the moment, okay? You have a baseline plan at the moment. And it was created on the basis of the, the data and the inspections that we do. It takes the municipality with perspective and, and it's prioritized based on those program criteria that we just talked about. So the resurfacing gets prioritized, the higher traffic volumes get prioritized. And, and that's how the baseline plan is set up. So key thing. Do we support continuing to do that? Do we think it's a good thing that we have this baseline plan based on the data? We take a municipality-wide view of it and, and we create a program that, that, you know, roughly fits those criteria that we put forward. In other words, continuing to do what we've been doing over the last few years by creating that baseline plan. Okay, so what I would get out for discussion, do people think this is a good thing to continue to, to do this? And are there any other? I will add in some major comments. I'll try and type them in so that they're visible to everybody here. My colleague Kelly will collect, collect some detailed notes. Sam, go ahead, yeah?
Again, you kind of mentioned it a little earlier. We're at the mercy of the amount of investment, amount of money that we're throwing into these programs. So knowing that, I, I think that we do, it is very important to have that, that baseline plan that's, that's data-driven in order to guide us until we decide to maybe look at another option of, of investing more, more capital in, into that than, than we're, again, like I mentioned, we're at the mercy of, of, of the amount of money that we can actually invest. So that's my take on that, for sure.
Absolutely.
Can I come in?
Please.
With the embassy.
I'm a C. I think it's important to maintain, to maintain it for, for one main reason because it's important to identify quickly which roads need to be done before they get too expensive to be done, you know? So that we can do the, there's, the money is divided between maintaining the ones that are only like five years, five years and when they just have cracks. So if we fill those cracks, then it will expand longer, the, the, the life, lifelong. And, and also some roads need to just have a resurfacing, a very thin coat. And it needs to be done when it needs it because if we wait longer, then we have to pay two, two times, three times the, the amount of money. So I think the plan, because the current plan that is set up now has been dealing with all those issues. So it's, it's, I think it's a good plan to base it, you know, as a base, but we need to add a few things to it which, which would come in the next teams. Thank you.
Can I come in, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Mireille.
So, I mean, no matter how much money we're going to put into this, this is always going to keep growing and growing. We're never going to get caught up. The more we go, the roads we build, the more subdivisions we approved. So, you know, I mean, we had flirted with perhaps at the next budget, starting to put money specifically aside for roads and, and the taxes and maybe even increasing that on a regular basis. So, I mean, to answer your question, yeah, I, I fully support it because it's a great, it's a great way to start. But you're never going to get a perfect plan when it comes to road. It's always going to be what's the best approach for that year and those, some roads may jump the queue and, and some roads may fall behind. But, I mean, it's something that we're never, ever, ever going to be done with. So no matter how much investment we put in, we can put 6 million this year or whatever the case is, it's just going to keep growing and growing and growing because the demand is going to be there. And the more the population grows, the more the roads break down. So anyways, yeah, obviously, obviously support.
Audrey.
I'm in, Mr. Mayor.
Audrey.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I also agree with the general baseline plan just because if you, if we look at the conditions profile, 37% of our collector roads and 41% of our local roads are either poor or fair. So with the limited amount of money we have, we can't have those, that percentage of roads turned into very poor or poor. So I think that's one thing that I'm also looking at in, in, in a baseline plan to, to, to make sure we don't have a bigger chunk that are poor or very poor overall.
Monsieur Lavigne.
Yes, I think, yeah, the base plan for sure, but one thing I'd like to know, let's say we put out the budget and raise the budget to 6 million. What about when we get emergencies that, you know, are very costly? Does that, that come out of that budget, especially for infrastructures?
Okay, I'm not the person to answer that.
No, okay.
Depends if your financial management, so, sorry, Michel.
No, no, just a question. I, I was just wondering because I think at one point, we did take some money off of our road budgets for an emergency, that's why.
Most of the time, though, it comes down to capital budgets if it's a major project.
Yeah.
Any other on the ones that
Don't want to come on top.
How does he, what's he done?
So the, the issue that I have is just that it seems that we would need to have two separate programs, like so the ongoing program that we have right now, the baseline plan. But there needs to be another plan for what I'm calling the dead roads. Okay, so the roads that are so beyond repair that would cost way too much to even look at. So when we're looking at Schmegani, when we're looking at Multi-Utahwe, and you get on Multi-Utahwe and you're there like, wow, where's the asphalt here? I mean, there's, there's, you know, it's beyond repair and it would be a high-costly repair and it's not a road that has a lot of population on it. And it's not a road that too many people pass on there, but it's still a nice road that goes to a nice golf course and we're looking for economic development, bring people in. But by the criteria, it's not going to get done. So it's considered a dead road because it's just beyond repair. So what do we do about those roads that are dead? That would cost way too much money to redo. Because at some point, you know, and we're looking enough for them right now, or we're putting some money into that one there, but we have a lot of those roads there, so and we don't have the, the, the capital investment to be able to fix those ones. So what do we tell residents? What's the long-term with those things? I mean, at some point, it's not like, you know, the road just eventually dies and we just close it and no one can go on it anymore. But we have to do something about it. So there needs to be some sort of a parallel program, some sort of a parallel fund to say, okay, so we have the one fund that's on the baseline plan and we want to upkeep the roads, making sure that they don't deteriorate too much. But we need to have something in mind for those dead roads that are just way beyond repair right now, that are just way too expensive. And I understand, I don't want to have one road cost $2.3 million per one year, then I've got $400,000 left for the rest of the budget, but there needs to be something for those types of roads, though.
Yeah, very, very good point. I've, I've recorded that as a, yeah, yeah, what, what do we do? Because kind of dead roads and what, what do we tell the residents? Yeah, yeah, that's a really good point.
Any other question?
Wait, Mark, same. Yeah, I agree with the, to maintain a baseline plan, maybe with a bit of modifications, but I do agree to go with that. And I agree with Don also with those dead roads, to have a separate plan maybe or just, there's too many of those that we've got. So we have to be responsible enough to like plan ahead for those ones also, not just do when it's too dangerous that we're going to be liable for an accident or something like that. Do it before that.
Okay, question, other questions? Okay, Andy, all yours.
Okay, great. So just quickly around the room. Used to do in a show of hands or however you want to do it. Monique suggested that. So, so who supports this, this general theme? Quick show of hands. Okay, I've got, everybody.
There we go.
Okay, right, thanks, guys. Okay, so we've got, got good support there. Right, excellent, good. I was kind of hoping that we get off we got a lot of support for the first one, yeah? So, so great. Okay, alright, so I want to move on to, to theme two, okay? And we may have a lot more discussion and perhaps a different outcome on this one. Okay, so theme two. What we heard from, from talking to you guys is that at the moment, the plan is, is a bit rigid. There was some, some data was used, a sequence of projects was put in place. And it, and it seems that there needs to be a bit more flexibility about it. Things do change. Councillors want to put, to have their input with what their residents are saying to them, so that, that's been at least thought about associated with the plan. And also an aspiration that we should look at the wards and, and perhaps say that no ward should go for a prolonged period of time without some kind of roads project, no matter how small. And so can we create a little mechanism that says we've got a baseline plan, but we will modify it slightly? And we will take these, these views into account. What is it that councillors are bringing in additional information? Let's take a ward perspective on things as well and we'll make some small modifications to the baseline plan. We accept, but by doing that, it may not be the lowest-cost approach. We may be introducing some things that, that, that do make things a bit more expensive in the long run. But we accept that because this is the, the answer that we want to get to on, on behalf of our, of our residents. Okay? So I want to open this up for, for, for discussion. You know, what do people think about this? Are there things that you would want to change about the statement that's there? And then we'll, we'll do the little degree of support at the end. Okay, alright, so I'll open it up. Does anyone want to kick us off?
I'd like to. Okay, okay. Sometimes, you know, a road may not have a lot of people on it currently, but because it's so close to the village or to the urban area, if there was to be an expansion, it would, that's where it would be. And so some roads, if they were maintained and if they were, or there was a surfacing on it, more houses would be built on that, on that road. Because some people do not want, like people coming from Ottawa, from Orleans, they are used at having asphalt. But they want to move a bit further away from Orleans now and more people are coming to Clarence Rockland. And, but it, they don't want to go on dirt road. Well, I should say mud road. And so I think that it, it's really important to take into consideration there was all the closest outside the, the urban area, but the closest to the urban area and start make, building those, you know, maintaining those, those walls properly with that, with the, so there's no dust and no mud. And so that we attract people. So there is room for, 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 we start expanding close to where the infrastructure is. So I think that, that, and I have never seen that in the, the current plan. I've never seen that criteria in it.
Sam.
Sorry. I, I'm, I'm of the opinion that development pays for development though, too. Into councillor Shuanyao's statement that you just mentioned, but I guess what I, where I would see flexibility is more along the lines of of, you know, being able to adjust the plan as it goes more of with, along with this, the new information that might be the new information that might be coming out of roads, infrastructure, every time that we go out and we actually analyze the data. If that data changes, I think I'm more flexible in the sense that, that this is a living document, and it can be updated continuously in order for us to be able to tackle the necessities in order to, to save as many roads before they get to that dead road part that we don't want to essentially get. So I think that's where I would, I, I, as, I think what would be good practice for us all is is, is break down that silo of wards, and just make sure that we make the best decisions for the municipality as a whole, so that we can spend our money wisely and strategically.
Shuleva?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Sam's point, I, I agree, and I, I would also add that the word, ward should not even be in this, in whatever we decide at the end. Whether you're in ward one, or ward five, or ward eight, or ward four, is irrelevant. We're talking about a road network. We should identify the criterias we are all, that we, that we can satisfy ourselves with, of the level of service we want. And that should be the guiding factor. The, having wards and aiming for project in wards and, and, and in terms, in council terms, is the exact reason why we're here tonight. And why we have a three to four million dollar gap into our road network. It's simple as that. So I would get the word, the word ward out of the entire conversation. Criteria.
Shuleva?
Exactly what I was going to say, exactly what Andre said. You know, there's so many pieces in one pie, and I don't think we should split the pie in every word, because sometimes we need to spend the money on a bigger project, and that's how we get ahead on a, either a road that really needs it, or whether it be a dead road, or whatever. I, I, I think it doesn't matter. We are a city, a complete city, and not a ward city, so we need to try and, I, I think we've always done that anyway. Been together and deciding together where the money's going, and not splitting even in every ward.
Anybody else?
Wait, Mr. Ma.
How does he?
So, you know, we, we'd been talking about this before, and, and I think to, to, a little bit on, on Don's point, what I think we need, and I've talked to you again about this before, is we need a rural plan and an urban plan, because the rural has completely different requirements than the urban plan does. The urban plan mostly has road renewing that needs to be done, but may need some underground work on there, some sewers or some water mains. And the rural, you know, we're talking about ditching and, and different things like that. So I, I think by, by moving forward with, with two plans, to be able to, to be able to identify what works in, in depending on where you are. But I agree about the warrants, like, what, you can have one road go through three different warrants. I mean, at which point do you say this belongs to who, or this belongs to what, and what needs to be done, what ward, and then we stop here because it's not approved in a ward, or whatever the case is. But I, I would love to see two plans, rural and urban.
Anybody else?
So, I was here.
Was he, Don?
Yeah, it, it has to be a citywide plan. It cannot be a ward plan, but I just want to remind councillors that at council meetings, at budget meetings, we've had people in the past mention, well, what if at least, we all had at least one road, and start with one road at least in our, in our ward, and then go from there? So I'm just glad that we're getting away a bit from that conversation, because I don't think dividing conquer will work in this one. We've got to pull together to make it work. So I'm, I'm glad to be hearing support for this, and I certainly support this as well, to have a citywide look to it.
Yeah.
The problem with this, I, I agree that we have to look at the whole city, but the problem is that in Waffen, you, there are four wards using the same roads. So there's a lot of people. So in order for some roads to be done in the villages, we will never, we just have one or two words that would, would gravitate within the village. So it means, it would mean that those votes would never be done. And this is where I agree with Tamariu, that there should be, there should be two different plan, one for the urban area around the villages, and, the villages and around the villages, and then another one for Rockland. For the urban area of Rockland.
Anybody else? Andy, it's all yours.
Okay, so a wide range of comments come in there. So, so Kelly will, will take those, those details in there. There's, there's, there's clearly different views. So let's do the assessment on, on the kind of theme as it's written, okay? So if you don't support it, then, then vote for don't support, all right? Some of the themes it's written, we need to be more flexible. And we want to make sure that no ward goes for a prolonged period of time without a roads, without a roads project, okay?
Can I make a quick suggestion, Andy, to put the comments of Mr. Bouchard?
Yeah.
In your ad comments here, that the two plans, urban and rural, might be an option to consider before we, just an idea, what do you think?
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll add that in the, the, the direct, okay?
Yes, I would like to continue discussing, I guess, on that point, then.
You know, I like the idea, but again, if, if, if the investment isn't there, it's, it's really hard to be able to say, well, we're going to invest more on the rural side, or we're going to invest more on the rural side. We're, we're creating a divide anyway, so why can this not just be an inclusive in the sense that we're going with, with what that criteria has been set out to be, in order to hit what the roads need to be hit? Are, are the ones that are going to be done for that year?
It's, it's because they, like I said, they have two different, two different requirements. I mean, for, for the most part, yeah, they involve, you know, asphalt and, and all that kind of stuff. But when we're talking about a rural road that requires ditching, that doesn't have any streetlights or, or anything like that, then you're talking about something a little different. It doesn't have sidewalks, it doesn't have curbs most of the time. But when you're talking about urban, you're talking about completely different things. You're talking about very structured roads, intersections. You know, I mean, curbs, all that kind of stuff. And most of the times, like, I know Don mentioned Natradam, but Natradam is example of the reason why it's being redone is because the underground needs to be redone. It's, yeah, the asphalt is crap, for sure. But we're talking about, you know, the underground that needs to be done. So, I, I mean, I'd love to have the conversation. Sam, you bring a good point, the, to be.
So, but is it, is it something, sorry?
I think it would be important to have two.
But is it?
The thing is, everybody has just said they don't want, they want to eliminate the ward part, but now you're putting another, another section where you're going to separate it.
No, I, I didn't want to, I didn't want to put that as a, as a separation, but just, yeah, okay, go, Mario.
Or, or maybe if we can.
We're not talking about wards, no. We're talking about urban and rural.
Yes, but you're still putting a separation. You're taking out wards, and you're putting a separation, urban and rural. A moment ago, we were saying we're looking at the whole municipality.
Two, two.
We're doing a different thing.
Yeah, but it's, sorry, I, I apologize. I apologize because I have a delay on my, my thing, so I apologize if I, if I'm cutting you guys off. No, and, and I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, that's how, I'd say, that's how it seems, but that's not really where my thinking is. My thinking is on priorities. All the plans and priorities that we need to be able to do are different between rural and urban. That's all, sorry.
Sam? So maybe it's, it's us looking at where we can invest more money that isn't necessarily on resurfacing, but more along like what you've identified. Is, is if there's a lack in the ditching, then maybe we look at that too. But would, would this, would that fall into this scope of work? For, for the plan of what's being resurfaced, or, or not? Again, it could be me that doesn't understand.
If I reword this, yeah, to say, recognize the difference in needs between the urban sections and the rural sections, yeah? Is that more reflective of, of what you're getting at? Rather than, yeah, recognizing the fact that there are different things that are going on, and being really much more explicit about it, rather than, you know, a separate set of priorities and a different way of looking at things.
Sure, as long as it's inclusive, you know what I mean? And I, I don't think that this, our plans are, are, are to be at that point at all. But I, I understand councillor Zant's point to to not forget rural, and I, I, I do agree with that, too. But again, I, I just don't want to create a divide, because then it'll be, I don't want to fight for that, that small pot of money that we have to go either to urban or rural, because, you know, let's just go with what our needs are, and go, and make it a needs-based decision.
Monsieur Grimal, Monsieur Le Don, la personne n'est pas une.
I think it was more.
It's more like.
Oh, Monsieur Grimal.
Sorry, I, I, I didn't mean to cut in. I think it's just to recognize the needs, and if we come by, we're just throwing ideas and, and like with Don's suggestion on the past theme, then you might decide to invest large amounts for dead roads that are in rural, and do some resurfacing instead in, in, in more urban roads. It just, I think it gives us a, a good recognition, doing a kilometer in urban versus a kilometer in rural. I think there's a difference in costs if you need to replace the infrastructure under. So I think, I, 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 I don't, I don't want to make it seem as, as a divide. But clearly, as rebuilding Natradam and rebuilding a rural road, there's, there's a lot of money difference involved in. I want to make sure the rural gets their fair share as well. So I, I don't know if that makes it better.
It's, it's, it's all in the world, in the world flexibility, because councillor Guimal brings a good point, you know, a, a, a road in rural to be reconstructed or to be resurfaced versus in urban is probably, is different. But it can still be more costly in rural, because you probably have a much longer road to do at this effort, the between two other roads. While in, in the urban core, you may have a more expensive road to do per meter of road, because you have infrastructure to change beneath, but it's a much shorter distance to cover. So the cost can be, so I think if you go by the criterias of, of the road per se, and the flexibility comes in to say, okay, well, we do, we definitely need to change the infrastructure, like the sewers are leaking, or whatever, the water main is done, we need to do it. Then the flexibility comes in that, while you do this road in the urban core sooner than it was projected in the plan, because something else happened underneath. So I think that's where the flexibility comes in.
Shuanyao?
We have a high percentage of, of rural road, and every ward has urban and rural roads. And the point, I think, what's important is, again, we have to take into consideration where we want the development to go. And sometimes, you know, when, when you have a road, there are maybe seven houses, when there could be twenty. Well, I mean, we should encourage those roads, and so that there's more development, because a developer cannot, will not build in, do in, in feeling. And but when we want to do in feeling close to the village, you're close to Rockland, to the urban area, I think it's important to take into consideration that factor.
Hey, anybody else?
The walls should be separate. What should be taken into consideration, I mean?
Opinion, Mr. Ma? So for raising, I, I kind of agree with a separate, but it's not the separating them completely, like you said, recognizing the difference needs, like raising the, the gravel in, on the rural roads. Stuff like that is a separate budget, but should still be on the plan itself also. Same thing as ditching, as, and all, and all those things too. Because in the urban area, you barely have, like, this is the way that we do, and ours have been, haven't been cleaned for years, and there is irrigation problems and all that because of that. So I think ditching and raising the gravel roads, like, not only the resurfacing part, but the, the gravel road's a big portion of our rural roads, too.
Yeah, we'll come on to. Yeah, yeah.
Andy, I think it's all yours.
Okay, okay, so, so let's do an assessment based on the written word there, okay? So we've heard several, several kind of different comments, all right? Diane about the criteria of the villages. Flexibility means kind of keeping up to date with things that are moving, and maybe the underground utilities, so different definition of, of flexibility. And recognizing these, these needs. But if we do an assessment based on what's written here, okay? And so what I've heard, several people don't support this, all right? So if you don't support this, then, then say that, okay? So who supports it as it's written down here? That's nobody.
Yes, I'm supporting.
Oh, sorry, one, sorry, I can't see, my screen's gone. Okay.
See, I'm sure he's also supporting it.
I think Zian is supporting also.
Okay, so we've got two supporters as it's written down here. Okay, sorry, guys.
Anybody else supporting?
Well, for me, it's just the, the no wards that I, that I agree with, but at the same time, the whole having two plans, I mean, I, I go back to the dead roads, and you need to have something further. So there, to me, I mean, and maybe it goes back more to the, to the first theme versus the second theme, when we talked about these different plans. Whether it be urban, rural, or dead roads versus, versus the regular roads, maybe that's more into the theme number one. If I'm looking just at theme number two, it really seems to be in terms of either doing it by ward, or having it, you know, like, has a, from a citywide, so the, the plan, the need for two plans are two ways to look at it. It's more of a theme one. I don't know, that's the only place where I seem to be getting confused. I don't know if someone can clarify for me.
So are you supporting or not, that?
Well, I support that we, we, we're not into a ward issue, you know, we're not aiming for wards, so that I support, that aspect.
Okay, so who doesn't support this? One, two, three.
And again, I'm just chiming in here, I, I, I support the comment that was put. But I, after hearing everything, I think we need a city approach, not a ward approach. But the comment of recognizing the rural and urban needs, which joined Mishuanyah. Rural has special needs, when it's time for development, you got to prep. So it, it's hard to, to vote on this one.
Yeah.
I see it as a needs versus this doesn't seem to be, I don't see the word need. It's more of like, I would like to, every ward gets their piece of the pie, even if it's not a low-cost approach. That's the way I read theme two.
No, I know, I said, I totally agree, but when you read the comments, so then I, I support the need to recognize the different needs, urban and rural, but I don't support the top part. So like, where do you stand after that?
So the way I, again, I see this potentially being in that theme one, and not in.
Okay, okay, well, then.
That's how I see it, to kind of go with what Don had just mentioned in regards to dead roads.
I got you.
Yeah.
But don't, but don't forget, don't forget, you can have a dead road in urban, too. So don't, it's just strictly in, in, in rural, so.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a hard question to sort of support or not support, but there's good in both sides, so.
Remove, remove the, any mention of ward, and I'm fine with it.
Yep, yep, and I made a detailed note about that, that, that the flexibility is king, but it's the ward thing here, that where there is a split opinion. Couple of people definitely interested in that, but, but several people are not, okay?
You got a very mixed question there, Andy. That's why it's hard to figure out which, which side you go to.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
I feel like this one's important. You can't mess this one up.
I was hoping that theme one, we'd get a lot of support for, and I thought, right, theme two is going to be a really difficult one, and we're probably going to have a lot of split, split views here, and there's not going to be a clear, clear answer on what we do, and we just kind of take, try and take something forward, yeah?
You're still missing three councillors.
Yeah, well, you, what do you do? You want to, we can't see you, so you might as well, Mario, which one would you want?
Oh, I already voted for don't support, just based on it says ward. But I know that, you know, we've got six blocks here, so three councillors or mayor hasn't.
I, I've scored. Christian?
I don't support again, just because the ward, the ward, ward, and that's the only reason why I'm not supporting it.
So there you go.
That's it, Tom, Wester.
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
I'd just like to make a suggestion that maybe, uh, Mister Whitaker could put the slide up, open the conversation. Can't see everybody.
We're having a hard time hearing you, Helen.
Oh dear. Okay. I was just going to make a suggestion that maybe Mister Whitaker up the slide, explain the slide and tie it down so everyone can see each other, including himself uh, for the discussion. And this may be a little easier for. Is that possible, Mister Whitaker?
Yeah, thanks, Helen. We'll, we'll, I'll, I'll try that next time. Yeah.
Okay. All right.
So we'll stop sharing. We'll put the screen up, uh, and have the discussion and then we'll come back to sharing again.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Okay. All right. So let's keep going. All right. You're trying to kind of gauge where, where, where everybody is and we can circle back at the end if we want to, but there's clearly a, um, uh, we've got some clear things that we've kind of captured associated with this. Okay. So theme three was around communication. Um, so this came up from, um, uh, from, from several of discussions that we had. Um, communication between kind of administration and, and council members. More simplicity and clarity in, in what is going on. What is the plan? Uh, why is it like that? Um, and where are we at the, at the moment? So much more simplicity in the way that the information, uh, is presented, uh, to council members. And to regularly reiterate the things that we talked about, the, the, the idea of the life cycle concepts, the criteria that we've applied, um, the trade-offs that we're, that we're looking to make all the time. Um, so that when we have a discussion, um, you know, administration council has a discussion about the roads program. There's much more simple information. There's some reiteration of some of the key principles, uh, that we had sort of set out to, uh, to try and achieve. Then the other half of it was around, um, council members talking to, to residents. Um, several people mentioned the value of having a plan and being able to um, talk to residents in a more informed way about what the plan was and where something either did or didn't, didn't appear uh, on the plan. Um, so is there an interest in, um, making sure that, um, uh, councillors have got simple communication packs or storyboards so that, um, but that, that, that communication can be facilitated with residents can be facilitated more easily and that, and that there's a, a little communication pack um, available to, uh, to be able to do that. Okay. So the theme of communication, improving it, um, and providing more simplicity and parity around it. Uh, and arming councillors with, um, some kind of communication pack to be designed in the future, uh, that helps um, with discussion with, uh, with residents. Um, okay. I'll, um, stop sharing my screen. I'll, I'll open it up to all the videos and, uh, uh, let's.
Well, I think with any, any plan or anything we do, communication, we is, is always, you know, paramount and it's the simplest, the simplest way to explain to, uh, council members, uh, and us to explain to residents is to actually understand, you know, the whole concept behind it. So yeah, I mean, that's, it's, it's easy to say, but it's sometimes that's where we struggle the most as a city is trying to explain to our residents or taxpayers why we're doing what we're doing. And, uh, you've also put there that, uh, simple communication packs or storyboards per ward. You're still using the per ward here. You know, it's not, it has nothing to do for awards. It has to do with the road network. So I think if we get away from that word, we'll be a lot better off. So.
Yeah, but I think right now we're just talking about better communication for councillors.
No, it's also communication from council to residents, Mister Mayor.
Yeah, yeah. But that's what I mean.
It's, it's a package. It's, it goes in and in.
We were done.
Yeah. As far as when the communication aspect of it goes, the, that one needs to have a, a direct word communication in the sense that when I have residents who call and complain about, oh, my road is terrible. It's this, it's that. Once explained to them, well, on the plan right now, it's due to be done in three years or in four years. Once they have that information and they have a, a view of it, then they're quite happy about it. And if it's just, you know, put in a, um, like the resident will look for his ward and it's a shorter, um, scan for it if you want. So if you have one major document and then the resident is scanning through the whole document, he's going through the whole city, right? So what he, so if we break it down in wards as to what are the upcoming projects for the next five years, the next 10 years, and then he could see it for war, then it's, it's a shorter, it's more specific to him, uh, or to, to her, to the residents. So I think when it comes to communication. And again, I, I've mentioned this, uh, you know, a bunch of times before, and I'm glad to see it on there, the, the importance to be able to communicate to residents about this. And when there are projects that are upcoming, you know, having a sign of the, you know, uh, coming up, you know, between two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-three, uh, ditches, roads, whatever it is that we're doing that project. Whenever we communicate to the residents, then it just eases down the pain about, okay, so my road is crap right now, but I know it's getting done in three years or four years, at least. There's light at the end of the tunnel. So that part of it just makes it so much easier on the residents to, to understand what's going on and to, to relax a bit about it. Instead of just having people call you out and just scream at you about how terrible the roads are, we need to be able to see the plan and it's shorter to see it if it's for war.
The problem is that sometimes some walls are supposed to be done and then because there is major work be, need, needed to be done underground. Well, even though the asphalt is not too damaged, it needs to be redone completely as well. So some, it happened a few times where the money that was supposed to be done for many roads has been all used to make, to do one major road. And, and it's not a critic, but it just, it happens. So even though we plan to do some roads, too, too many times that money goes back into one big single project because they need to, to, to dig and change the, uh, uh, the sewers or there is a, some, some damage done because, uh, there's, um, uh, so it's, it, it ends up at not being, we end up not being able to follow the plan. And, uh, it's, um, it's very difficult because you know, like people, I think if people were paying a different rate, uh, tax rate in, in the, in the rural, they wouldn't complain as much, but because they are paying the same level, the same rate of taxes. All they want is their world. They, they don't use anything else in the city. For, for them, it's like walls, garbage, and that's the most important for them. And so that's why if it, if there's no maintenance, regular maintenance, uh, to maintain the road properly, it, they feel that they pay taxes for, for nothing. And this is where I, I'm sure that all of you get those kind of comments for home citizens. You know, A, we pay taxes and we pay the same amount of taxes as everybody else and our houses sometimes is worth three times even, so we pay even more taxes. And, and, and people are complaining that they don't, the least they can, they can get is proper walls. So that's why I don't know how to address it, not necessarily by word, but that's why it's so important to take into consideration the rural and the, 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 the urban area. Because if we just maintain the, the urban area and we never expand and, and do resurfacing and do, so we don't have to constantly, uh, um, dig the, the, the ditches and, and redo, put, put some gravel that ends up in the dishes anyway, ditches anyway. So, you know, it's, it's the, the need are so different for the rural and the, the, the urban. We need to keep them. Um, it can be one plan, but putting some criteria that are specifically related to the, to the rural world.
I agree with you, Benam Shwanya, but right now it's communication and communication really is what we need, uh, between the residents and the city. I think it's, that's where the lack is compared to, uh, like, we, council knows pretty much what's going on. Uh, but it's letting the population know what, like, like you said, putting signs that there's something coming up. Uh, coming here in summer or fall or whatever, we're going to be doing this. Uh, it encourages people, like Don said, there's light at the end of the tunnel. So that, that's my comment on that.
I would probably encourage, again, if, if it's on there, I apologize for this comment. Um, like, uh, just like a summary sheet, uh, uh, that, that kind of gives you the calls notes of, of how we can speak to, uh, to the, to this, this, this plan, asset management plan, so that we can better uh, communicate ourselves as councillors to our residents and as well as, as deferring people to it. Uh, uh, the administration to, to residents as well. So yeah, I definitely, uh, an important thing to do. But again, I don't want to go to the point where it's, we, we simplify things, uh, to the point where it's, well, I need more information because, uh, I have questions about this, not like, what are your criteria? So I don't want to dumb it down per se. I want the information that is needed, uh, of the whole package included. But I also would like maybe, uh, just that summary sheet that, that can, that can help us out for, to guide us. But other than that, uh, uh, no, I'm fine with this for communication.
Yeah, I think, uh, communication is not bad, but we, I think communication and education go together. Uh, like my, my name is Shwanya. I was saying, I, I get these comments too. Uh, people saying, well, all I got is garbage. Well, you've got to tell them, well, you just, you, you've got your road plowed in the winter. You've got your ambulance. You've got your fire. Uh, you've got your social programs. You've got educate people all the way because then they'll, they'll tell you all, I, you know, I don't use, I, I don't have any kid that's cool. I don't use this. I don't, but they all go together. Information and education, I think they all go together.
I think it's important for residents to, to understand that, um, uh, you know, their road, that they pay taxes for the entire road network, not just for the road that they're on. It's not just that it's about how they get to the grocery store or how they get to work, how they get everywhere. Um, my issue with, uh, communication sometimes is that, um, I feel, or we're even, um, aware that the communication comes in. And so and just to be able to, like everybody else said, to just get back to our residents. I, I do have a lot of questions sometimes from people and, and I go, well, it's on the plan. Well, how did they make it on the plan? I'm like, well, it's, I don't know. It's categorized and then go, well, how is it categorized? What's your criteria? Right? And so a, at that point, you know, I, I just, at that point I say, well, you're going to have to call city hall. They've, they've got the plan and I, I, so, um, but yeah, I, I definitely think that council should be much more aware, uh, which obviously this is what this is for. So I applaud this process and I'm happy that this is going the way it is. Was I really talking like R T D two again?
Thank you. Uh, cool. So I'll put this back up. Okay. So, uh, you know, reasonable amount of support for communication there. Question about, you know, the, the role of, um, you know, do we have more board oriented, uh, uh, communication, um, you know, purely to support individuals talking about their area? Question mark associated with, um, with that, um, and the real importance of, um, uh, providing good good communication backs to councillors so that, uh, uh, they can deal with queries from, uh, from residents. Um, okay. So, uh, let's go around and, um, uh, okay, let's do quick, uh, shows. Uh, so who, who supports? Show of hands, who supports the communication side of things?
And Andy, just a, just a comment to add. I really liked the panel advertisement. So let's say not a damn one point two million in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. I think it's great communication right on the ground. So, uh, I really like that approach. I don't know if it's a comment you want to add, but, uh, could be a great innovation.
I, I love that approach as well too. So I support that one. Just the signs on the ground say what's going on, how much we're investing. I love that.
Yeah, me too.
Cool. Um, okay. So that, that I, I quickly went through. Was that, um, everybody except one supported that from that show of hands? Okay. Did anyone not support the, uh, uh, the communication theme? Okay. So that was everybody. Okay. Cool. Good stuff. Okay. Um, I'm just going to add in your comment there about, um, signs on the ground. Yeah.
Some of those signs, we don't have a choice to put up because we're getting federal or provincial funding for it. But as our general practice, even if we don't get provincial, federal funding for it, we should still do it.
Yeah. Yeah. Good point. Good point. Okay. So, uh, let's move on to, um, theme four. So again, this may be war of, uh, uh, very split views amongst the group here rather than the consensus. Um, gravel roads. Okay. You have a large number of gravel roads, uh, in the municipality. Um, and you have gone through a process of upgrading to hard surfaces in some areas and there's been some situations where they've been, um, kind of pulverized and, uh, and returned. Um, so there seems to be, uh, an element of, um, uh, you know, a range of different decisions being made at, uh, at different times. Um, so gravel roads, upgrading gravel roads to, to hard surfaces, um, is an enhancement. It, it's not just maintaining are, it's an enhancement, uh, in the, uh, service to persons. Um, and, and it increases the, the long-term cost. There are the hard surfaces are more expensive to, to maintain in the, in the longer term. Um, so um, do we continue what is our sort of general policy has been general policy as I understand it? Do we continue a policy of, of a freeze, um, on these types of enhancements? We won't upgrade any more gravel roads until we get to our point where, um, some of the renewal deficits that we've got at the moment, we talked about dead roads and things like that. Uh, until a chunk of that has been addressed, um, and, um, and then we feel we're able to, uh, to take on some of these enhancements. Okay. Um, so the theme is we continue the policy, um, of a freeze on, um, upgraded gravel roads to hard surfaces uh, until such point as we've got, um, uh, addressed some of the, the current, uh, issues. Um, and we've got funding to, to be able to do it. Uh, right. I'll turn that over to everybody and, uh, let's, let's hear what everyone has to say. And I'm expecting a range of views here.
There we go. Um, I agree the free should stay in place. Um, we can't enhance uh, service for some residents while we're taking, literally taking, uh, roads away from others. I mean, uh, we have had a, a few roads, uh, Mister Mayor, Mister Small, your own road was pulverized into crushed home because we just couldn't maintain it in Ashfeld anymore. So, uh, we should, the plan however, should have enough money into it that gravel roads are able to be maintained to a certain standard that act, that's actually acceptable to residents. And that's where I think we've, uh, we've had some issues in the, in the last years because we, we can't, uh, we don't allocate enough money to, to protect gravel roads as gravel roads. So obviously if we have a three, four million dollar shortfall in what we should be putting into the budget, we can't enhance, uh, roads. We just need, we, we, we can't even, uh, address the roads we have now. But we need to have enough funding to maintain gravel roads. Thank you.
I definitely resonate that, that resonates with me. I, I, I share what councillor Laon has to say. And I think this is probably where we were getting at. And again, I'm speaking for myself. I don't want to, uh, speak for everyone is, is, is maybe that's what you were, uh, considering into the rural is making sure that we continue the investments in order to maintain a certain standard. Um, because at, at this point, I do agree that with the inbound of money that we're, 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 that that is lacking is, is the reason why there's shortcomings and on those dirt roads. So i- if we can definitely up that pot of money, uh, to, to, uh, uh, to, to, to set that, that, that acceptable standard for them. Again, I don't know what that is, but I would definitely, uh, uh, move on to that.
I, I agree with, uh, the freeze because most people that bought the land on what they are right now, they bought it on a gravel road, a gravel road. So they accepted that, okay, I'm building my house on gravel road. People that bought a house or a land that was an asphalt road or a hardtop road, they, they, that's what they bought the land there for is because that's what they had. Um, we shouldn't reduce the service. Um we shouldn't reduce the service, we should keep it the same. But the gravel road need to be acceptable also, like I was saying, raise the road so it it drains properly, uh ditching and all that, and dust control, like more than once a year, that would help out quite a bit too.
I'm sure.
Baseline is considered to be in the wall. Can you imagine bringing back a baseline on the on the in the mud and on gravel wall? You wouldn't. So you see the awesome walls, like even to luck, to luck is being done this year. You're happy that it's being done. See, so it's, but it's in the wall. So you know, you cannot say one thing on one hand and then benefit from the other one. Uh to me, it's, there are some rural roads that have so many houses on them and expensive houses that saying that, oh, well, it's been a a dirt road, it's gonna stay a dirt road. It's like saying, there's no progress. Like, you know, you're not allowed to progress. We are allowed in the city, we we are allowed to uh to, in the urban area, we are allowed to upgrade, we're allowed to have better roads. But in the wall, hey, you 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 don't evolve, you don't, there's no evolution, there's no improvement, there's no, it it's not fair. They pay same amount.
There's no money.
I I understand, but they have, they still pay a lot of taxes, you know, so they they, if if you want to keep it on gravel road, then we change the type of gravel that we we use, because after two years, the type of gravel that we we use in Clarence Rockland turns into mud. And then it it's slippery, like the cars are going like this down the road. It's very, it's 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 bad, it's, you know, and the dust in the summer, it's terrible. And I I've been requesting many times to have an estimate, if if you put that spout, it's good at least for twenty years. And then over twenty years, if you just have to clean the snow and and uh do a minimum um uh management on the wall, maintenance on the wall, then how much would it be if you don't have to do the, to clean the ditches, you don't have to to put the the dust suppression suppression? Uh you don't have to uh uh add gravel that end up every year in the in the in the ditches. You know, when you count all those expenses over a period of twenty years, I wonder if it would be the same amount of money as doing the asphalt one one time over for for twenty years.
Okay. Should be job.
And it's to kiss out some else point, I mean, there's just, there there isn't the money for it, and you're shooting yourself in the foot if you're doing that, because you're gonna need a huge amount of money to invest it to be able to upgrade from gravel to uh to pavement. And then after that, you still have to keep it. I mean, uh uh an asphalt road is not, I mean, after a couple of years of riding on it, three years riding on it, you're already doing maintenance on it. Um so even long term now, you you're adding to the amount of maintenance you have to. There's nothing wrong with a good gravel road, but I I I resonate with my um with my counselor friends, uh we need to have good gravel roads, though, and right now, that's not exactly the case. So if we if we have the standard where our gravel roads are the way they're supposed to be, and they 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 run well, then we're good. And and I think that might be an area, however, in this discussion, that might be uh might be worth looking at and to put more money into gravel roads, not necessarily upgrading, but more money into gravel roads to have better maintenance on them.
Sure. Me go.
Like uh uh fir- first of all, like Christian said, uh I I don't agree that if if you bought a property on gravel road, it should stay gravel road. Things have evolved, some, a lot of houses have have been planted there on that road. And I I don't know if if, what seems to, what is the the domain, what is the the criteria to for the pay for the gravel road? Do we know what the criteria is for a gravel road? It it doesn't seem, because one gravel is not the same, one gravel road is not the same as the other, so I I don't know what our our standards are. Does anybody know what the standards are for gravel roads in Clarence Rockland?
Sure.
Like guys, I understand, but the 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 reason why we're doing this right now is because we can't even take care of our road network that we have. So now we want to enhance other areas while we can't even like maintain, we're 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 killing off roads that are costing us tons of money because we've neglected them for so long, and I'm not blaming council. Or or you know, this is something that's been happening throughout the years, all right? This is not something that just happened during our term, the term prior. This is an issue that's been going on for years. So how can we, but so so until we can uh maintain what we have, it's really hard to justify uh uh you know, enhancing another road. It it it's it's that, this is the, this is why we're here right now. And without having that added investment that is needed to take care of everyone, like we wish we could, uh but we just can't, like, so you know, we have to we have to, we have to make sure that we take care of 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 that network.
Sure.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying that uh let's never do the gravel roads and 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 upgrade it. I'm saying right now, with the budget we have now, we can upgrade it. It's irresponsible of us if we do. So and same thing with saying that we're not using the right type of rocks. Well, we're not road designers, that's not our job to decide what goes there, that's they tell us what we're gonna put on, we're gonna put it on. It it's the mainness, raising it is what we need really. The difference between the good one and a bad one, when we're in dirt, because there's not enough rocks. Put more rocks, it would raise it above and then it can drain properly.
Sure.
I think a lot of the complaints we we typically get in the rural setting with gravel roads is because we haven't invested enough in them to maintain them. So to what to to councillor Sima's point, that's exactly it. Invest the right amount of money that you should for those types of road, and the complaints will, it won't stop, but at least they'll be, they'll be diminished.
Sure.
I didn't mean that we wanted, that I wanted to pave the roads, and that's not what I meant, I meant maintaining at least a gravel road, that's what I meant, okay, Sam?
Okay. Okay, Sam, Madame Joania.
Well, one thing like, what about um if people already have a got um uh asphalt road? When it needs to be repaired or upgraded or redone, then there would be local, local improvement fees. And then, so the first time that the asphalt is put in on the road, it's put on the way, as either the asphalt or the surfacing, hard surfacing, either either one, when it's put put in for the first time, the city pays for it. Every time that it needs to be upgraded or it needs to be redone or fixed and everything, then it goes to local improvement. Then it would be fair, because the people who, you say, yeah, people bought their house and it was, it was, there was an asphalt. Yeah, but somebody else paid for it, you know, so they don't have ever to pay for it. We we and then we ask that the people who are in gravel road now, hey, it's either you pay for it or you 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 don't have it. You know, it's it's, this is where it's not, it's unfair.
Monsieur Sima said, we don't have the money for it.
And and I don't know what upgrades are happening in the urban area.
Don't forget, we also have a certain amount of debt that we can only have. So you can't pass that debt, if you put a debt too high, then we're stuck everywhere else. Okay, Sam. Okay, Andy, it's all yours.
Okay, I'll show my screen quickly and uh and let's uh see the the support on this. Great discussion, everybody, I recognize there's a range of views uh around the room here. Um uh cool, so um degree of support for um you know, the continuing the 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 policy of a freeze, um maintaining gravel roads adequately. So let's relook at the strategy for gravel roads and make sure that we've got a good uh maintenance strategy for them, and that may well involve some changes. Um and um and then address uh address them for for upgrades when when there's funding to do it. Um okay, so so quick show hands, who supports that overall kind of approach? One, two, three, four, uh five, six, at least, I'm sorry, I'm not, this is not working as well as I hoped. Okay, and uh uh who doesn't support? Okay, we've got uh one on the doesn't support. So we'll we'll take this forward, um and administration, Julian and others will um will work further um and and come back to you guys with uh with something more formal. Um okay, so I want to move on uh to the final theme um for this evening. Um additional funding for the roads program. Okay, I recognize that um there isn't an adequate level of funding at the moment, and it does make everything very difficult. Do all that we want to. Do we want to consider, do we want the administration to investigate some scenarios? Uh again, this is just an investigation uh to look at um funding mechanisms where we can try and get more funding into the roads program. Uh one such approach might be some kind of longer term uh uh tax levies, or property tax increase, all right? For a small percentage over a period of time, um but would generate more funding in the in the roads program. So as I've mentioned it before, uh to 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 most people, um you know, the the city of Winnipeg introduced a half a percent increase dedicated to the roads program over a prolonged period of time. It quite quickly builds up uh a significant chunk of funding into uh into the roads program. Um so it will be dedicated for the roads program, would continue to seek, obviously, funding from higher levels of government or whatever, but we we get this kind of understanding about tanks to be uh to be self sufficient. Okay, um okay, so let's open that up for for discussion.
Monsieur. Sure.
We'll see if I still sound like R two D two. Is it, does everything sound okay?
Good.
But finally, uh this technology. Um yeah, absolutely, I think that we need to, I I I think that we would be this um commercial sector that I think assists with that a little bit more, but uh five point five wouldn't be enough for us, so we'd have to look at a one percent on top of everything else that we would need. Uh and even that, I think that's what, two hundred and some odd thousand dollars a year, I mean, does that, I mean, it's a start, but um who knows where that's gonna take us, but yes, I support increasing that so that we can at least get this, the show on the road.
Sure.
I mean, yeah, I think that's what councillor Zant was referring to, he cut out a little bit, but you know, we we do already have a policy in place at the city that uh one percent increase per uh fiscal year for budget, so I think that's what you were referencing to councillor Zant, but
Um yeah, 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 but what we decided to do, sorry to cut you off, just to continue the conversation. I wasn't aware that we were doing that every year. There's nothing, there's no bylaw mandating that, we're taking it one year at a time.
No, there is a man, there is a bylaw that's that's that we passed for that, it's just that like every
With the budget?
Yeah, for for budget, so there's actually
I was, okay, I was under the impression it was the one time we were revisiting it every year as maybe, but
Let's
We may need to increase it, maybe to lower it.
Maybe that's, maybe that's the one approach, and it's, but it's also, I mean, yeah, it's part of that, an entire budget of forty, forty six, forty seven million, whatever we're at annually, so it all comes down to how much uh can we afford for residents to pay increased taxes? So I I support the idea because we al- already do it. Uh whether we try to increase it, I guess it's um a possibility, um but always looking forward to a hefty discussions at the budget.
Madame.
The current, there's the current bylaw that already has been uh set up in two thousand twelve, I believe, uh in order to uh to to start, I think it started in two thousand twelve, and with this, I think it's two percent, sorry, with two percent of the budget uh that has to be allocated towards, and it it there's a, the bylaws says that it has to increase one percent every year. And uh so, but again, it, we have to make sure that that money stays to do the world. That it doesn't, when we have, when there's a need somewhere else, that we don't keep digging into that that fund in order to do uh other things with it. So, because it it did happen, you know, and we are really short, so, but going, I it's better to increase now a little bit at the time than when, I remember when we created it, it, people were not happy about it. But now they're happy because we were able to do a lot of roads, like baseline was a road that was really needed to be done. And finally, it was done, and there was a lot of roads like that, that wouldn't have been done if the two percent had not been started, you know? So I I agree that, you know, if you can agree either on one percent or half a percent every year additional, you know? But uh yeah, we need to um to get the money somewhere, and it it's getting harder and harder to get to get some um funding from the governments, because the uh the funding now is more uh very particular, on very particular project, either for bridges, and then in another year, it's more about uh leisure and then recreational. And so it's 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 very rare that we have the opportunity to uh to apply for funding for roads.
Next question. Anybody else? Sam?
I think what I would like, and again, I understand that uh prices and costs change yearly, but if I could get like a uh a rough estimate of 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 how how much needs to be invested like today? And then how we can uh better plan uh of or how the administration sees this of of what the investment uh this, a certain type of investment of I am at an additional three million, what what it would it look like? I kind of want to see different options in order for us to 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 see if we need to get that bump ahead to 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 start tackling some of these these uh roads that are at the at 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 a tipping point so that we don't lose roads. Uh so again, I think the most, the more information that we can get, the more uh different uh options that that could be looked at and presented to us could definitely help uh us uh try to 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 get over what seems to be an impossible feat. Again, want to make sure that we're we're spending our money wisely as well, but again, are we, what I guess I want to know as well is that that we're not no uh in a danger zone for to lose a lot of roads. I guess that's where I'm I'm really focused on.
Okay. Other questions? Monsieur.
This is more a question for the administration, I guess. When we added a a one percentage of tax, and this year was two hundred and fifteen thousand additionally to the budget, and the following we're, following year, we do the the exact same thing, it grows exponentially. So to fix that gap of we have of three point whatever million, I mean, how long are we looking at? If we keep systematically doing that every year, uh adding one percent of the tax base roughly, do we have an estimate on, you know, when do we get caught up to a point where Sam is saying, you know, we get more comfortable that we can start attacking and uh other projects like other uh like gravel roads and 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 you feel more comfortable that we're ahead of the game instead of trying to catch up?
I'm calling you, if you got a comment there.
Um it's uh to put uh and then on how far it would take us to catch up.
We're having a hard time to hear you, Helen.
The one percent because those gap with the
You're cutting out again.
No. Guess maybe internet's weak tonight.
Stay there.
Okay, I won't move. Um so the one percent a year to close the gap is marginally. Obviously, if something bigger comes along that we're unaware of, that will make the gap big. Um I believe Mr. Dart made a presentation to you a number of years ago, identifying at that time the gap with about four million dollars. Um we will be looking, relooking at the gap as part of this process, so that you will have that number presented to you and what will be required to um close the gap. So the, it's really important to maintain that one percent increase to the road reserve. We've given it up a couple of times in previous years to meet a budget uh percentage increase. Um and when we present that uh increase to the road reserve in the budget process, it's kind of a little asterix there that this is related back to that actual road bylaw. And um certainly, the bylaw is very specific that the money in the roads reserve, and it's one of the few route well, no, all the reserves have bylaws now. Um but should we need funds out of the road reserve, we have to come back to council. And I believe there's only once, as long as I've been to, back to council to to make an exception. Um but for the most part, for moving forward, we've always used the money in the road reserve for the roads, it's maintaining that one percent. So last and next year. next year, whatever the one, because it it's one percent of the tax rate, right? So last year it was two twenty-five, next year it's probably gonna be two thirty, two forty. Um so it will increase by itself. Um however, giving it a boost will not hurt. So the easiest way would be to amend that bylaw from one percent to one point five percent. We will be back to you with the number, though.
Uh it still comes down to um if we keep, if we follow the plan as set forward and if we don't get into a problem where we have a road that collapses or a sewer that a line that decides to break on the other year or whatever else
Right.
So
Having the asset management plan in place, in theory, correct me if I'm wrong, Julian, uh we should not have surprises, because we've done proper assessments and we should be able to move through and follow the plan.
Yeah, and that that's absolutely right, Helen, and we have reduced uh the amount of um emergencies that we've seen in the past. Since the plan has been introduced, we we haven't really encountered any of those. Uh we we had a lot of culverts to replace that had met their life expectancy and that we had some challenges and over the years, we we've also addressed that, so uh it served us in 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 those regards, uh served us well.
Mike Guy.
No more questions? Andy, we're back to you.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, um my connection's a little bit unstable, so I do lose the audio every now and then. Apologies, I'm so quiet. Um okay, so quick show of hands, those who um uh support investigating additional funding scenarios um and multiple scenarios, being clear about what we would achieve with that uh with that additional funding. Okay, so we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Okay, there we go. Alright, I'll put that up on the screen and move those um around. Okay, um right, good stuff. Thanks, everybody. Um right, so we've been through some of the uh the key areas um that we wanted to uh to to talk through with you guys, get some understanding as to, you know, where there's a good degree of support, where there are differences and other information that you've contributed, myself and Kelly have made some notes and we're talking through uh with uh with Julian and the administration afterwards as well. Um uh are there any other burning items kind of related to this area um that people think that we haven't addressed um through the course of of the seating? Um and would want to um either, you know, take the twenty minutes that we have left um to discuss them or, you know, maybe or schedule them for another time. Uh are there any major points that that people feel that we haven't addressed and we should do?
Just a question like that. I know that ditching, and then I'm going back to that. Should it be part of our asset management plan or keep it as? Because depending on minstrelty, some of them has has a mass and asset management, and some people, it's just what drains our asset, which is the roads. Uh so should we put that in the asset management plan? That's my question.
I- in principle, you should. Yeah, you should have a clear plan for managing your ditches to whatever extent that is, alright, and it and and often it's not, it's not great uh in in most cases, but yeah, in principle, it should be there. Okay, I'll make a note in here.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Okay, no other questions?
No.
Okay, good. Um uh so um Julian's drafted out a set of uh next steps um off the back of here, okay? Which is basically to take the um output from from uh from what you guys have um talked about this evening um and to develop some um, you know, revised asset management plan and some more policies and practices um around this, and then bring it back in a more formal manner uh to to council. So at this stage, Julian, um if I can just hand over to you, and if you can kind of just wrap that up a bit more uh formally from uh from your perspective.
Yeah, it's fun. Um thanks, Andy. So um really what we're gonna be looking uh on doing is uh bringing a report back to council to uh reiterate some of these discussions and to have a more formal direction uh on on these, because uh this is gonna form uh the 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 basis or the uh principles to which we're gonna develop the new asset management plan. Granted that there may be some more discussions that that are needed to uh to happen to be able to clarify some of the things. Uh I know one of the discussions that was a bit uh a a bit more difficult tonight was the question about flexibility and what does that really mean? So we may need to discuss about that further. And then, uh so then the uh the next step will be to then develop our net uh our asset management plan to uh review and to uh include the new um the new baseline or new principles. We're also, like Helen had mentioned, looked at developing a uh multi-year funding strategy, which essentially the question that was asked about, what is that funding gap? And how do we deal with it, or how do we reduce it over time? And uh it's it's a balance, it's it's it ends up being a balance of how much money we could inject and and over how many years do we want to um address the gap? So um so for example, we're talking about one percent, one point five percent. Well, how many years is that gonna take us versus five percent? And then and then we could look at different scenarios and bring some recommendations back to uh members of council. Uh and this should all be included in the asset management plan, but the new asset management plan is brought forward to uh council for our council's adoption. Um and then uh we heard uh tonight that communication is a big, big challenge. Um and so we are going to come back with um some uh communication uh examples, uh some some packages like um Andy had mentioned and uh for council's consideration and uh that we'll be able to share with members of council in the public as well. And uh then uh, well, like I mentioned just to the previous year, their flexibility, that question, uh we need to maybe a bit more work around that. And then uh I think that we will need to develop a policy uh in respect to gravel roads. We discussed about it, but uh I think that we will need something a bit more concrete, something that uh something in the form of a of a policy um or or something like that. So that's uh, those are the next steps, and we are going to be bringing this back to council over the uh period or the course of uh of this year and the following year.
Okay, that's great. Thanks very much. So if I can hand it back to you, Mr. Mayor, that's the
Question, Monsieur Lalon has a question.
Uh it's a question for Mr. Leonard. Are you going to be able to finalize this completely this year so that we have the, ready for the budget in November for twenty twenty-two? So we can really have something to grapple with when we decide how much money we want to inject into roads and everything else?
I don't think that we're going, we'll have to look at the dates. I don't think that we're gonna be able to have an updated asset management plan in time for that. Um however, there are a lot of elements that we are going to, probably gonna be able to have. Uh for example, the uh when we talk about the the funding strategy, the multi-year funding strategy, that is something that that I think would be reasonable to have uh for the budget process. The actual asset management plan itself, um I I think that we already have a a asset management plan that is in place. Uh there is work that's still needed on that one, but it's still uh has um the the baseline or the main concepts, I guess, that that members of council are comfortable with. Um and I think the question is really gonna be about flexibility uh and how can we include that if we can't have a an updated asset management plan in time for uh the the budget process? So I think if if we deal with those uh elements, uh we should be able to have something that's still uh I think still need meets uh members of council's needs, uh but ideally would be the
Okay, other questions? Okay, it's all yours. You got, are you finished or?
I'm I'm done my rant, uh Mr. Mayor.
My Nick would have Andy, thank you very much. Andy, are you still there?
I think he's gone.
And I think my Nick gooded him out again.
No, I didn't. Uh he's still there, but he's probably having problems. Uh I just stopped his uh shared uh screen, but he's still there.
Okay, I'd like to thank everybody that participated in this tonight. Uh very good information. I think it was good for everybody to get this. Thank you very much.
All right, great job, guys. R deux des deux, R deux des deux est parti là.